Ladies and gentlemen, the session of this honorable bodies about documents, everybody will please rise.
Being the City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, I hereby call this regular session to order. Roll call please, Mr. Secretary.
The Honorable Members of the Sangguniang Palungso, Honorable Camille Angelina M. Lopez, Honorable Michael Dural Timorada, Honorable Joel De Buah, Honorable Yuniloikatipon, Honorable Galileo Pe Angles, Honorable Oscar Angos II, Honorable Ralph Peter Sumali, Honorable Jennifer Spighty Toledo, Honorable Beverly Luansing Luna, Honorable Venise Di Manalo, Honorable Fiora Rockford, Honorable Riofer Nicole H. Rongkilio, Honorable Chan Paulo En Makala, Honorable Limanuel T. Rekto, and the Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Mark Aris Filuansin.
Do we have a coro?
We have a coro.
The Chair hereby requests the Honorable Spighty Toledo to deliver the invocation.
Let us all remember that we are in the most holy presence of our Lord, in the name of Father, and Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gathering of all us here safely. Give us a good health and guide us on making decisions for the improvement and development of the city. Help us all with our problems in life. Thank you for all the blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. In the name of Father, and Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
The Chair likewise requests the Honorable Spighty Toledo to lead the singing of the national anthem.
Ilagay po natin ang ating kanang kamay, sa ating kaliwang bahagi ng ating dibdib, at awitin po natin ang pambansang awit.
Privilege, Honorable Nilo Katipon, you're recognized.
Good morning, ho. Before the... Kung sino ang may gusto mag-privilege sa'yo, at ako na lang humunahon itong SOS. Nandito ho 'yung ating mga director at mga bilis panibanay. Meron ho tao natatandaan niyo kung nun tayo nag-aaral pa sa Lhasa Alkadalas may mga classmate tayo mga taga SOS sa Anosa. At ito 'ng SOS bilis panibanay, napakatagal na hong panahon na pa... na tumutulong at ah... lagi ho itong nakagapay. At ito ho ay binibigyan din natin ng pahalaga o pagimportansya. Kaya ito ho ay atin 'ng marapatin na ma-suspendiho munang rules papagbigyan ho nating make kuwan ng kanilang program na baka sakali ho do's ating mga projects, sa ating mga ordinances ay makakatulong mo sa kanila. So, Prisak Nalays, Miss Irma Yohanyo, yes, si Program Head po, si General Lasin, ho, bilis director, at saka ho si Mang Sandoval, Fund Development Coordinator. So, I am requesting the August 8th na ma-suspendiho natin rules. Papigyan ho natin kahit li-limang minuto, si General Lasin na ma-explain kung anong program ng kanila.
There's a motion for the suspension of the rules. Any second, seconded discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable Nilo Katipon is hereby approved.
Okay, and ito po 'yung representative po ng SOS.
Hey, so good morning, ladies and gentlemen. So, my name is Lan Rose Sandavan, the Fund Development Coordinator of SOS Children's Village Lipa. And with me is Mr. Irma Yohanyo, the Family Strengthening Program Head of SOS. And of course, our Village Director, Mr. General Lasin. So, it is really a privilege to be able to present to you about the programs and services of SOS Children's Villages Philippines. So, we're very thankful that we are given this opportunity to introduce to you what is all about this organization. Of course, let me start this presentation through a quote from Mr. Nelson Mandela. SOS Children's Village provides the foundation for life to children who need a place to call home. SOS Children's Villages is one of the largest non-political, non-governmental organization that provides long-term care to children in need. So primarily, we support to children who have lost parental care. So, it is with pure heart that the vision of our founder, Doctor Herman Minor across the world flourish. Seeing how young people suffered from the worldwide too, we opened the doors for family-based approach of helping children in need. So, he is our father founder. And SOS Children's Villages is present in 135 countries worldwide. And in the Philippines, it is present in eight villages, eight locations. So, we have in Lipa, Bataan, Manila, and of course, in Visayas, we have Iloilo, Cebu, Takla Ban Kalbayog, and One in Benidaw, which is located in Davau. So, the first SOS Villages, if you have already have an idea about SOS, so we are located in Banay Banay, Lipa City, Batangas. So, it is the pioneer SOS in the Philippines, which is existing for 52 years already. And it was declared as... May 1 was declared as SOS Day under the leadership of Honorable Congresswoman Wilma Santos Rekto. So, what are the programs that we have in SOS Children's Villages? So, we have this SOS Family Care. So, in this program, we provide support for those children who have lost parental care and those children whose best interest is no longer to remain in their own family. So primarily, the main beneficiaries of this program are the orphaned, abandoned, and neglected children. And last of now, if you're going to visit, if you happen to visit the village, we have 12 family houses there. So, in each house, we have the mother... we have the mother that serve as poster parent of these children. So, these are not biologically related to these children. So, this are our SOS mother. This mother dedicated their lives for these children. So, they are not really connected with the children by blood, but they really... because of so much love for these children, they are able to take good care of about 8 to 10 children per house. So imagine the number of children that they need to take good care even though they are not really related to each other. So, one of the requirements of being an SOS mother is that they must be single and they don't have any commitment outside SOS. But they are not deprived of getting married. Of course, they can get married, but if they decide that path, they need to go out SOS. And our children are not open for adoption. So, we are not accepting those... we are not accepting adoption po for SOS. And these children, if you're going to ask us who serve as the father of these children, so we have the Village Director. So, he serve as the father of about 111 children and youth inside the village. Of course. So, as of now, we have 111 children and youth po that we support inside the village. So, they are going to... they go to different schools po here in Lipa. And what are the support that we give to these children? So, we give them basic needs, basic education, empowerment, health, college education, and employment. Next po. And what is the second program of SOS? So, here is the Family Strengthening Program. Family Strengthening Program works in the community to prevent family breakdown, which often leads to child neglect and abandonment. So primarily, the beneficiaries of this program are the indigent families po that we support in different locations here in Lipa. As of now, we have 611 children beneficiaries under this program that we support in three barangays po dito sa Lipa. So aside from reaching out to these children inside the village, we also reach out to indigent families outside the village through providing educational assistance and allowances for these children. So, we are present in three barangays po in Balintawak, San Carlos, and Barangay Sico. And what are the support that we give? So, we give them basic education, college education, empowerment of course, livelihood program. And why are we here? So, we are here to ask for a partnership of course from the LGU. So, where did these children came from? So, they are from different areas here in the Philippines. But we also have children who really came from Lipa. So, we ask for a support from all of you po if you may consider. So, the first is LGU partnership. Second is cost-related marketing. Second is event beneficiary. Third is event beneficiary. If you have any events that you have, you can have us as your beneficiary and employ engagements. So, for the LGU partnership, first and foremost is we ask for any financial support, of course. We could apply for funding support for all children and youth referred by the LGU of Lipa, which is being practiced by other LGUs po. We have LGUs po na parang nakakuha kami ng financial support from them kasi minsan sila 'yung nag-refer ng mga bata. So, they give like annual support, which is kahit magkano lang naman po, we do not require any amount. It shall be coordinated by MOA and in coordination with the DSWD and of course, CSO. Second is we ask for a support for education. So, access to scholarship grants for formal education, access to test the vouchers and all support for informal education, and partnership with the government and NGOs for capacity building and support of local primary and secondary schools. And health and nutrition. So, we can also partner with the Department of Health po dito sa Lipa through your support po siyempre. And for security and livelihood and social and empowerment like volunteer programs. So, pwede po kaming mag-accept po ng mga capacity building and network building on child protection initiatives in local communities and other things na pwedeng... kayo po ay magserve as volunteers. And of course, aside from the financial support that we ask, we also ask you to visit the village. So, one of the campaign that we have is the SOS immersion. We invite people, partners, to go to the village kasi iba po kasi talaga kung makakabitet kayo ng village kasi you would really feel how it is... how our organization operates, ano ba talaga 'yung meron sa mga bata. So, yun po. And next. So, you can do also volunteering activities. Yan po. Yan po 'yung mga possible activities that you may also consider doing in SOS like clean-up drive, facility repair, maintenance, landscaping, construction, and coordinating. And of course, one of the campaign for financial donation is Committed Giving Campaign. You may sign up for this campaign. Like for example, if you donate 500 pesos a month, you would really help a lot po for the continuity of our programs and services. For as low as 500 pesos a month, imagine. Of course, next. And these are our graduates po as of now, which came from... who came from SOS Children's Villages. So, some of them have already work. And these are our beneficiaries. We are proud to say that we are able to produce graduates po from SOS. Of course. So, that's all about SOS Children's Villages Philippines. So, do you have any questions po or clarification?
Honorable Fiora Rockford, you're recognized. Siya po ang ating Committee Chairman ng Social Services.
Okay. Magandang umaga po. Ako po ang may hawak ng budget at saka ng social services. I will ask our Vice Mayor, pag na-resume ang session, ang rules to refer the matter to the Committee on Social Services and Budget for the request of SOS for financial assistance to the LGU in a form of MOA. And kayuhinibitan ko, kung alam naman po ninyo na meron tayong Bahay Pagasa sa Lipa, wherein we house children, majority of them are conflict with the law, 'yung may mga problema at ginawang kasalanan. Sa kasalukuyan, we are... I am on the process... the committee is on the process of establishing an ordinance, establishing the Bahay Pagasa, pinaltanahon namin ng pangalan, its manual of operations, the funding and the penalties provided for in violation of the ordinance. Baka ho matutulungan niyo kami dahil kayong expert riyan na mag-set up tayo ng magandang manual of operation na pwede rin naming gamitin sa aming Bahay Pagasa. Magtulungan ho tayo. We will help you with the funding. Help us also establish our Bahay Pagasa. Since you are 52 years na, marami kaming matututunan para maging kapakipakinabang naman 'yung aming Bahay Pagasa. And I will have a scheduled visit to Bahay Pagasa. I would also like to invite you to visit Bahay Pagasa and to propose amendments for development dun ho sa Bahay Pagasa. Magandahan ho natin. So, magtulungan ho tayo. So, yun 'yung hihingin ko tulung sa inyo. Ang inyong request for LGU assistance, I will request the Vice Mayor later to refer the matter to the Committee on Budget and Social Services. Grabe pong salamat.
Thank you so much po. I think the best person that could respond to your proposal po is our Village Director. I'd like to call on here our Village Director, Mr. General Lasin po.
Hello po. Magandang magandang umaga po. Your Honorable Vice Mayor, Magluansing. Magandang umaga po. And to the members of the Sangguniang Panglungso, isang mapagpahalang umaga po. At sa mga tao pong nakikinig po sa likoran. Kami po ay nakahanda po makipagpartnership. Una una po, ako po ay empleyado po ng SOS, but I also belong to BCBP community. And part of our program ay kami po ay quarterly bumibisita po sa Bahay Pagasa. At nagbibigay po kami ng talk para sa mga bata. Nang ito po mga batang ito ay mabigyan natin ng formation talaga at makapagbagong buhay pag la... labas nila. And willing po kami sa organization, naishero po kung anuman po 'yung aming nalalaman. Kasi ang intention din naman po ng founder natin talaga na si Herman Minor ay to make these children talaga paglabasong society, to be productive. At naniniwala po kami na wala pong bata na hindi po pwedeng hindi magbago kapag nabigyan ng pagkakataon. At idagdag ko lang po, ang SOS po ay nagsimula po sa IMS Austria. Yung founder po namin, nagsimula lang po sa one shilling. One shilling po, yun po 'yung monetary form ng Austria. Sa Pilipinas po ay piso. Sa SOS po, hindi po lahat ng tumutulong ay mayayaman. Kung sa isang kompanya po ay isan libo po 'yung tao at nagbigay ng piso, isan libong piso yun. Kung sa Austria or sa European countries, nagbigay sila ng isang euro kapag napagsama-sama po yan at itinulong sa ibang bansan ngangailangan, lalo na sa mga bata, ay malaki po ang nagagawa. Kaya po sa SOS, dahil 52 years po kami, sabi po ng Europe, baka naman po sa ngayon ay pwede ng Filipino people helping Filipino children. Kasi matagal na pong panahon na tinutulungan po tayo ng mga ibang lahi. Baka naman daw po pagkakataunan ng Filipino na tayo naman tumulong sa ating mga sariling bata. At ngayon po, ay naruna po kami sa sustainability part. Kaya po kami i-kumakatok po sa pintuan ng mga LGUs and so organizations po dito sa Lipa upang mas marami pa tayong mga batang matulungan. Yung po pinakita kanina ay labindalwa pong mga bata namin na... sabi nga natin, nabigyan po natin ng pagkakataon. Last week po, ako po ay galing po ng Hong Kong kasi may inihatid naman po ako na isang bata na nabigyan naman po ng two-year scholarship worth 2 million ng United World College of Hong Kong. Wala po kaming gastos dun. At nabigyan din lang po ng pagkakataon 'yung ating nakakaangatangat na bata with regards to academic na mabigyan ng pagkakataon ng panibagong journey sa Hong Kong. At pagkatapos po doon, may pagkakataon po siyang mag-aral sa United States. Tulung din po yun ang ibang tao. Ngayon po ay 52 years na kami. Nawapo yun tulung po at pakikipagpartnership sa Sangguniang Panglalawigan at kay Vice Mayor at sa atin pong Mayor na mula noon pa po si Bokala wearing Africa ay matagal na pong pumapasyal sa mga bata po ng SOS. Nawapo ito ay maging makabuluhan at patuloy po ang pakikipagtulungan. At umaso po kayo na iyong mawa po, yung partnership, Consejal Abior ay makikipagtulungan po kami. Sa inyo po lahat nandito, marami marami pong salamat at magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat.
Thank you. So, ang best ninyong gagawin pa maya ay makapag-usap dala sa Chief Executive kung kailangan dapat patibayin 'yung MOA, 'yung memorandum of agreement. At yun naman is subject sa ratification ng Sangguniang Panglungso. So, willing naman lahat. So, sa pamunan ni Vice Mayor at saka ni Consejal Abior, Committee on Appropriation, Chairman of Appropriation, ay di malaking bagay ho, yun nangyari ngayong umaga. So, thank you very much. At Mr. Presiding Officer, resume the session.
Before we resume, Sir Lasin, marami marami salamat po sa SOS Village Family po. Marami marami salamat sa pagpunta niyo, pagdalo dito sa Sangguniang Panglungso. Sige, ano na.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, may privilege speech po 'yung apat nating kasama.
Um, yeah, you refer mo na 'yung peano. Um, session resume.
So, Consejal La...
Wait, ano? Um, for the SOS? Hindi, uh, refer.
Uh, refer sa Committee po ni Consejal Abior.
Uh, refer to the Committee on Social Services and Budget. Um, Honorable Beverly Luansing Luna, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Sa lahat ng bisita at sa lahat po ng naririto, isang magandang umaga po sa inyo. Um, nun ako po ay nangangampanya, akin pong nakasalamuha halos lahat ng kababaihan mula sa kanilang presidente hanggang sa kanilang mga ordinaryong miyembro. Akin pong nakita ang sigasig at pagiging aktibo nila sa kani kanilang barangay. Masasabi ko po na ginagawa nila sa isang barangay ay isang paglilingkod bayan din. Sapagkat wala naman silang natatanggap na honorarium mula sa barangay, ngunit patuloy pa din ang kanilang pagiging aktibo. Kapag ho may kailangan nasamahan sa City Hall, may mga aayusin po ng mga papel o kung anuman pong dokumento, maglalakad po ng ganito at ganyan, ay madalas ay sa kanila po siya pinasasamahan ng mga kapitan. Hindi namang po natin masasabi na lagi pong available ang barangay patrol upang sila po ay bigyan ng service. Kaya hindi po ba ang pamasahe po at abala ang kos nun sa kanila. Kapag ho may mga paglilinis, aktibidaded sa barangay, gagawa ng ganito, gagawa po ng ganyan, manunulungan, kababaihan ho ang unang tatawagin. Lalo na ho pagdating ho ng eleksyon, malimit ay laging kauna-unahang sumasama sa atin na bolontaryo ay ang mga kababaihan. Akin ho napagalaman na sila ay tumatanggap lamang ng halagang isang daang piso kada buwan bilang allowance at ito po ay ibinibigay sa kanila quarterly. Parang talong-talo naman po ata sila doon. Kaya, Mr. Chair, ang inyopong lingkod ay nais mag-sponsor ng isang ordenansa na nagbibigay ng allowance sa ating barangay Women's President sa halagang limandaang piso kada buwan. At ang pangalawa po ay mapag-aralan na ang plantilya po ng Vousey Officer ay maipagkalob din sa presidente ng kababaihan bilang ito naman talaga ang isa sa pinagtutounan nila ng pansin. At ng mas mapalaga... mapaglaanan ng tamang atensyon at pagtugon ang pangangailangan ng kapwa nila kababaihan, yun lamang po, Mr. Chair. Maraming salamat.
Uh, the matter brought up by Honorable Beverly Luansing Luna is referred to Committee on Women's and Appropriation.
Thank you.
Next po. Honorable Nicole Rongkilio, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, at my fellow counselors and everyone. So, today, my privilege speech is about the spaghetti wires. So, there's this ordinance, the general ordinance number six. It states that this ordinance shall be known as the Public Distribution Lines Ordinance of the City of Lipa. And it states in section two that the provisions of this ordinance shall be... shall cover the construction, installation, and maintenance of electrical poles and wires, cables for television and telephone pole and cables or wires within the territorial jurisdiction of the City of Lipa. So, section 19 of this ordinance, it states here the penal provisions. So, there are about four offenses with the corresponding fines and/or punishments. And then, it has concerned me that this ordinance has been amended twice already. One was during the 1st of February 2010 and the second one was on the 16th day of February 2015. I am raising this issue because as you can see from the pictures, the state of the wires has remained stagnant. So, they continue to be an eyesore and they are a threat to the safety of the citizens. So, they can be electrocuted, they might trip and fall. And I don't mean to offend anyone, but there was this time nun nangangampanya po ako, other people use these wires to hang their clothes to dry. So, I hope that this series of ordinances can be reviewed and studied once again so that proper action and execution may commence and that this may serve as a precaution so that this won't happen in the future, especially with the expansion depacities yet to face. So, Mr. Chair, I hope that this concern would be referred to the proper committee.
Um, referred to Committee on Public Works. And also referred to Committee on Public Utilities.
And then, may isa pa po.
Okay po, proceed po.
So, my next one is about the JP Laurel Highway, corner TM Callow Street. So, may mga parents po and a number of citizens na lumapit po sa akin dahil may ni-race po silang concern tungkol po sa mga anak nila ni mga students po ng Dama Binia Academy. So, there are no proximal overpasses and pedestrian lanes located near this particular crossroad. Having one would most certainly give the students ease getting to the other side of the road and this would also give the parents, students, and those who would use it, a safer environment. So, Mr. Chair, I hope this would be referred also to the proper committee.
The matter brought up by Honorable Nicole Rongkilio is referred to Committee on Public Works. Honorable Venise Manalo, you're recognized.
Good morning po, Mr. Chair. Sa mga kasamaan ko pong Consejal at sa lahat po ng bisita na naririto, magandang umaga po. Regarding lang po sa ospital ng Lipa, ask ko lang po sana ano po pwede nating gawin or alternative way kapag po walang feel health. Kasi may na-encounter po ako na patient na nasa operating room na... Kasi may na-encounter po ako na patient na nasa operating room na supposedly ooperahan na, pero nung tinanong po if may field health at ang sagot niya po ay wala daw, hindi po natuloy 'yung operation. Etto think na po na dinadaing na po 'yung pain na nararamdaman po niya. So, sabi po nung guard jan, willing na lang daw po siyang magbayad. But given the fact na libre po ang ospital ng Lipa at hindi po tumatanggap ng bayad, hindi po natuloy 'yung operation ng patient at lumipad po ng ibang ospital. So the issue here and my question po is, what are or what is the alternative way po na kapag wala kang field health, ano pong pwede nating gawing another solution? Or another issue po is, paano kapag wala kang field health and wala ka ring pambayad at the same time? Sana po ay ma, ma, maibigay po ng tamang aksyon ng proper committee po. Maraming salamat.
The matter brought up by Honorable Vinis Manalo is referred to Committee on Health. Comment po, Honorable Camille Lopez, you're recognized.
Hi, ah, good morning. Um, regarding sa comment ay sa privilege ni Consihal of Vinis, ang ating DSWD kasi nagbibigay, I mean, Community Affairs nagbibigay sila ng emergency field health. So basically, if um, intelligent 'yung magpapa-opera, they can directly go sa ating Community Affairs Office. And um, is it also possible at any way na pag nagcommittee hearing tayo, mapatawag din natin 'yung person na may concern? Alright, thank you.
Ah, Honorable Abior Rockford, you're recognized.
Mister Chair, para po sa kaalaman ng lahat, ah, sa ngayon, tayo po ay hindi na nagbibigay ng emergency field health. Dati po tayo ay may tinatawag na point of care system. Yung point of care system, yung po'y pinupunduhan natin ng three million yearly. Lahat ng pasyente na walang field health sa POS, natin ipinapasok para po makakuha sila ng emergency field health. But ah, noong kalagitnaan ng term ni, ng dating mayor Sabili, nagkaroon po tayo ng COV findings na pinagbabawalan na tayo mag-issue ng emergency field health. Ang maganda pong mapag-aralan ngayon ang commitiba ng health ay ano ang mga pamamaraan na pwede nating gawin sa mga pasyenteng walang field health, Mister Chair.
Okay po. Um, Honorable Spai Toledo, you're recognized.
Mister Chair, good morning. Good morning din po sa ating mga Consihal at sa atin pong mga bisita. Ah, ang nais ko lamang pong i-privilege ayun pong ating ah, tubig. Ano po, kasi hindi ko po alam kung ako lang po ba ang nakakapansin, pero sa araw-araw ko pong paggamit ng aming banyo, eh, ang pressure ho ng tubig ay mahina pero malakas ho ang buga ng ah, hangin. Ano po, so ah, nagkakaroon po tayo ng ah, pwede pong tumaas 'yung ah, singil ng tubig dahil po sa pressure ng hangin, kung saan limited lang naman 'yung naibibigay na tubig sa ating ah, gripo. Ano po, at saka po, nais ko rin po sanang tanungin ang ating ah, ah, Metro Lipa or ang ating water district kung hanggang kelan po tayo pwedeng mabigyan ng ah, ng ah, malakas o ng supply ng tubig dahil ah, nagkakaroon na po tayo ng shortage ng tubig. Hindi lamang po sa ah, City of Manila, kundi nararanasan na rin po natin dito po sa lungsod ng Lipa. Paminsan-minsan po.
Um, the matter brought up by Honorable Spai Toledo is referred to Committee on Public Utilities. Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized.
Naihihiala ako magtanong si Consihal kung saka si Consihal po ha. Ah, ano ho'ng plano ga'ho'ng gusto niyo ma-privatize ga'ho'ng water district?
Hindi ko naman po gustong ma-privatize ang water district. Gusto ko lamang po malaman kung ano pa po ba 'yung kanilang plano, kung gusto pa po bang madadagdagan ang atin pong ah, water pump or paghahanap po ng supply ng tubig. Nang sa ganun po, matugunan ang ating ah, pangangailangan.
So matataling panahon o inyong ipapumihtihiring at kami ho'y aatin.
Sige po.
Maraming maraming salamat po. Um, wala na po, um, reading of the minutes of the preceding session and approval of the same, Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized.
May sulat po si Consihal Aguen Wong, former city councilor. Requesting ho na mapabalik na sa kanya 'yung idonate 'yung traffic lights. So akin ho sana ito mapasama do'sa committee ho ng public works saka ng good government na nung isang araw ako ay nag-privilege speech about do'sa traffic light ho dinis sa Rotonda. Sa kasaysayan ho ng ah, ng traffic lights sa buong mundo, tayo laho may traffic lights sa Rotonda, sa buong Pilipinas. Kaya ay pangginis book of record at yun ay hindi dapat matuloy. Kaya ho dapat eh mapatawag ho ang, ang contractor na yan saka engineering para ho magpaliwanag kung saan nilang pag-aaral kinuha 'yung, 'yung traffic lights sa Rotonda. Papa'na, ilabawa, any stop mo do'sa may galing pilahan? Stop, gogo naman na ring sa Parrotonda 'yung isa. Iikot talibawa ang galing City Hall pero stop. Di magkaklagyan o sinasabi ho'ng hindi ho maganda sa tatlong ah, tatlong eh, 'yung engineering, education, at saka imposer. Di ho, yun ho'ng tatlong eh, 'yung secret ng engineering ng traffic. Kaya ho ah, dun ho sa nagpapabago-bago ho na experimental routing ang may pakanaho niya ay akaw. Mga kunahon ang inyong ituro na 'yung mga two-way traffic na yan. Sinilo katipon ho ang may pakanan yan. Kaya laho, meron ho tayong dalwang baldang ah, kalye, 'yung Altamirano Street, 'yung ginagawa ng Tore de Lorenzo. At ah, atin ho pinaalis 'yung pader daw, sabi nga ni Consihal of Beverly dapat may sidewalk. At saka ho aring TM Kalau, aray buong buong gagawin. Kaya ito ho may traffic ho'ng nalalasap ho. Kung sa panahon ay ambagay darating, ito ay traffic naman ho, volume. Ang makikita ho niyo dito sa General Luna Street hangga't ginagawa ho ang TM Kalau. Responsibilidad ko ho 'yung traffic routing na yan. Yun ang gustong magreklamo, ay kami ho'y nahingin 'yung paumanhin sapagkat may mga ginagawa laho'ng kalye, kaya ho ganyan yan. Pero pag matapos ho 'yung kalye ka yan, traffic parin ho 'yan.
Ah, the matter brought up by Honorable Nilokatipon is referred to Committee on Public Works and Traffic. Reading of the minutes of the preceding session and approval of the same, Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized.
The two Mondays of ah, August seventeen and twenty-seven and twenty-two, please consider as approved the previsition, the minutes of the previsition, the two weeks of previsition.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable Nilokatipon is hereby approved. Proposed ordinances and resolution for second reading.
In behalf of ah, kagawad yun yung dosos, delayed, kagawad, ay absent, kagawad yun yung dosos, ah, deferred po 'yung kanya committee report dahil wala ho signature 'yung members niya saka ho 'yung chairman.
Um, there's some, there's a motion for deferment, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable Nilokatipon is hereby approved. Next po, ah, this is for the day Mister Secretary.
Number one, ah, letter request ah, to the city mayor regarding ah, the use of vacant lot owned by the Lipa City Government for the construction of the new barangay hall of Matasa Lupa.
Committee on Public Works, referred to Committee on Public. Construction? Oh, used, ah, I'm sorry, ah, referred to Committee on Good Government.
Number two.
And barangay affairs.
Number two, ah, letter request for accreditation, ah, bukluran ng mga mamamayan sa Depakan Homeowners Association.
Committee on Accreditation. And. Sige, diretso po.
Number three, ah, letter request for accreditation. NGO Federation of Lipa.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Number four, letter request for accreditation, Citizens Crime Watch.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Five, ah, letter request for accreditation, WILIAM Lipa City Riders Club Incorporated.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Number six, letter request for accreditation, Licma Veya.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Number seven, letter request for accreditation, Craftsman Global Workers Cooperative.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Number eight, letter request for ah, accreditation, Batangas Family Farm Multi-Post Cooperative.
Accreditation.
Number nine, re, ah, request for accreditation, Bantay Bayan Foundation Incorporated.
Committee on Accreditation.
Number ten, request for accreditation, Ram Guard Jones Incorporated.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
Ah, request for the passage of a resolution granting special use permit, smart cell site.
Refer to the Committee on Land Use.
And number twelve, ah, letter, letter from the Philippine Dental Association, ah, addressed to the honorable members of the SP through the city vice mayor, requesting for the accreditation of their organization.
Refer to the Committee on Accreditation. Other matters, Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized.
Meron ho tayong bisita from ah, Sarango with Colonel Lina. Mayay baro ho 'yung papel niya, ano ho'ng inyong gustong gawin diyan?
I'm declaring a one-minute recess. Session resume. Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized.
Ah, formal ho, binisita ho tayo ng ah, Sarango. At ito ay isang malaking karagalan ho namin kayo, aming naging bisita ho dinis sa Gunapalusod. Sa pangunahon ng aming Vice Mayor, Mac Luansing. Sa pangunan naman na Kamulog, Lina, ng Sarango. Ay pamaya ho after the session ay makikipag-usap ho individual ho sila sa ating mga kasamahan. So, sa tingin ko ho, wala na tayong.
Other matters. Refer ko muna po sa ano, accreditation.
Ah, ah.
Do you want me to refer?
Kuya Mulog, ipa-acredit na rin natin itao. Ayaw, refer na rin, isama na rin sa accreditation.
Ah, refer to the Committee on Accreditation.
At yun naman sa Kuya Boy, 'yung Matasa Lupa, tayo ho ay magko-kumithiring kasama ho 'yung homeowners ng Bilya Lourdes. Ischedule na Kuya Boy kung kailan ano ho, para siguradong maging atin 'yung lupa. Kaya mahirap pagdao-dao, pagka-urgent natin, tapos sila'y tumangga. Ano ho, sisiguraduhin natin para tayo'y makapwesto na agad down.
Hi po, ah, other matters po?
Mister Chair, I have here a letter coming from the secretary of the SP, requestfully requesting the realignment of 180,000 to be taken from traveling expenses under the MOOE to augment consultancy services in the amount of 180,000 be referred to the Committee on Approve, Mister Chair.
Refer to the Committee on Appropriation.
The same be considered as urgent?
There's a motion for urgency, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none. The motion of Honorable of your report is hereby approved.
Mister Chairman, I move that we pass an ordinance realigning the amount of 180,000 to be taken from traveling expenses under the MOE of the said office to augment the consultancy services amounting to 180,000. The same be excused from the three reading principle, approved for third and final reading and exempt from the signature of the members of the Sangguniang Panglungsod.
Any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, the motion of Honorable of your report is hereby approved. Ah, anything else, um, Honorable Nilokatipon, you're recognized. Can I solicit a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
There's a motion for adjournment, any second, seconded, discussion, objection, hearing none, session is adjourned.